This session is on health and the relevant estimates. So Secretary for Transport and for Food and Health, please. Thank you, Chairman and members. In 2018-19, the estimated recurrent government expenditure on healthcare is $71.2 billion, which accounts for 17.5% of the government's total recurrent expenditure and represents an increase of about $8.4 billion or 13.3% as compared with the previous year. New and additional resources available are mainly under the following services. The total recurrent provision for the hospital authority in 2018-19 amounts to $61.5 billion, up 10.7% over the 2017-18 revised estimates at $55.5 billion. The additional recurrent provision is for implementing new initiatives and enhancing various types of HA services, including employment of all qualified medical graduates and healthcare professionals, as well as implementing the following key initiatives. First, providing 574 additional public hospital beds, rehiring higher healthcare professional retirees, and recruiting non-locally trained doctors through limited registration to help alleviate manpower shortage. Supporting healthcare training and enhancing proficiency of healthcare professionals and enhancing various services, including psychiatric services, palliative care services, services of nurse clinics and specialist outpatient clinic services and pharmacy services. We will also allocate an additional provision of about $2.185 billion to the Department of Health for enhancing various services and implementing key measures, which include implementing new measures under the elderly healthcare voucher scheme. In 2018, an additional 1,000 worth of vouchers will be provided for eligible elderly persons on a one-off basis, and the accumulation limit of vouchers will be raised from $4,000 to $5,000. Implementing a new strategy for non-communicable diseases and a mental health education and de-stigmatization campaign, and increasing the provision for developing the colorectal cancer screening pilot project and other cancer-related projects, and making preparation for regularizing the program to cover persons of specific ages. For public healthcare services to sustain continuous improvement in our public healthcare services, the government will progressively increase the recurrent provision for the HA on a triennial basis having regard to population growth and demographic changes. To tackle the influenza surge, the HA has deployed $500 million for implementing relief measures to alleviate the work pressure on frontline healthcare personnel. It has also decided to abolish, with effect from 1st of April, the policy on incremental pay freeze in the first two years of service for new recruits so as to boost morale and retain staff. Healthcare reform. On healthcare manpower, the government has substantially increased the number of UGC-funded healthcare training places from about 1,150 to about 1,800 over the past decade. The government is now discussing with the UGC the further increase in the UGC-funded training places for doctors, dentists, nurses, and relevant allied health professionals in the coming three academic years, starting 2019-20. Moreover, following the passage of the Medical Registration Amendment Bill 2017 in the Letcor in March, the Medical Council of Hong Kong will implement as soon as possible the arrangements for improving the complaint handling procedure and disciplinary inquiry mechanism. We plan to submit to the Letcor on the 2nd of May subsidiary legislation related to the election of late members by patient groups. With the passage of the bill, the period of time limited registration of doctors to be approved by the MCHK has been extended up to three years so as to enable non-locally trained qualified doctors to practice in Hong Kong, alleviating the acute manpower shortage in public hospitals. The government will amend the law to allow tax deduction under the voluntary health insurance scheme. Premiums paid by members of the public for themselves and their dependents will be allowed for tax deduction. The annual deduction ceiling is $8,000 per issued person, and there is no cap on the number of dependents eligible for tax deduction. In addition, we conducted a detailed review of the regulation of private healthcare facilities and introduced the Private Healthcare Facilities Bill into the Letcor in June 2017 for the proposed implementation of a new regulatory regime. On primary healthcare, the government set up a Steering Committee on Primary Healthcare Development in November 2017 to develop strategies and a blueprint for primary healthcare services. The Steering Committee is making preparation for setting up the first district health center in Kuicheng District in the third quarter of next year, after which such centers will be progressively set up in all the 18 districts. The Financial Secretary has announced in his budget that adequate resources will be provided to fully support this initiative. On mental health, it was also announced in the budget that a recurrent provision of $50 million will be allocated for implementing a mental health education and de-stigmatization campaign. The control of non-communicable diseases is one of the DH's priority tasks. We will provide a funding of $50 million for the DH to implement prevention and control strategies and encourage the public to adopt a healthy lifestyle to reducing the risk of non-communicable diseases. Colorectal cancer has remained the most common cancer for the third consecutive year in Hong Kong. The government launched the three-year colorectal cancer screen pilot program in September 2016 to subsidize screening tests for Hong Kong residents who are aged between 16 and 17 without symptoms. To benefit for more people, the government will allocate of $940 million in the next five years to regularize the program and extend it to cover individuals aged between 50 and 75. On subsidizing drug treatments, there are new drugs on the market which are ultra-expensive. The government and the HA have launched a new medical assistance program under the Community Care Fund in August 2017 to provide patients in need with subsidies for the purchase of ultra-expensive drugs. The HA has also commissioned a consultancy to review the patient's copayment mechanism under the CCF's program. It is expected that improvement measures could be formulated in the first half of 2018. The budget has also set aside $500 million for this purpose. This is to show the government's commitment on the issue. The specific use of the funding will be considered, subject to the outcome of the review. Regarding development of Chinese medicine, as announced in the 2017 Policy Address, dedicated units for the development of Chinese medicine will be set up under the Food and Health Bureau to coordinate and implement the strategies and measures for promoting the development of Chinese medicine in Hong Kong. We have also commissioned a consultancy to consult local stakeholders, as well as mainland and overseas experts on the modes of governance and structure of business and operation of the Chinese medicine hospital. A detailed report will be completed soon. In light of the report findings, we will endeavor to announce the positioning and the development framework in key areas of the CMH in the first half of 2018. Also, we will set up a $500 million dedicated fund to support the development of the Chinese medicine sector. We intend to consult the Chinese medicine sector extensively on the specific areas to be covered by the fund within this year and brief the panel on health services on progress. We will also include Chinese medicine data for sharing in the second stage development of the electronic health record sharing system. As for expenditure on infrastructure, on the development of public healthcare infrastructure, the Hong Kong Children's Hospital will commence operation in phases from the fourth quarter this year. We will continue to implement the $200 billion 10-year hospital development plan. The government has already invited the HA to start planning for the second 10-year hospital development plan, which will cover, among others, the institute development of Princess Margaret Hospital and Tumman Hospital, construction of a new hospital at the Kings Park site, i.e. the existing Queen Elizabeth Hospital site, and expansion of North Lanta Hospital. It is expected to deliver 3,000 to 4,000 additional hospital beds. The DH also manages a number of clinics which provide public healthcare services. As most of them were built several decades ago, the clinic environment and facilities have become outdated. The government will improve the DH's clinic facilities in phases. The government has set aside $300 billion as an initial provision to support the second 10-year hospital development plan, improve the clinic facilities of the DH, and upgrade and increase healthcare teaching facilities for the universities. Chairman, my colleagues and I are happy to answer questions from members. Thank you. Well, a lot of people like to speak. A total of 15 members have pressed a button. There are still three vacant slots. So those who are not here yet, please come down as quickly as possible. Mr. John Demi Tam, five minutes. Thank you, Chairman. First, I fully support the colorectal screening program, and you are going to regularize it and to cover it for those aged between 15 and 75. I have a question on a reply 003, and that is on the Hong Kong Students' Hospital in Kaita Development Area. As of the end of last year, you have been hiring only 50% of the doctors, and for the other professions, 40% only. Well, we've got only one... Well, it would be commissioned in the fourth quarter, so we don't have much time left. Do you have any latest progress of the recruitment exercise? Your answer only covers the period up to 31st of December 2017. I'm very worried whether you can hire enough staff. Or are you confident that you can hire enough staff? I'll see if the HA has any updates for us. The Children's Hospital has all along been within our plan. Apart from recruiting new staff members, because Hong Kong Children's Hospital is handling more complicated cases. We have plans to transfer complicated cases handled now by the hospitals and refer them to the Children's Hospital. We know that we... So some of the staff will be redeployed there as well. And the progress of staff recruitment has been satisfactory. So can I defer to Dr. Lam?
Thank you, Chairman. We are recruiting in phases. In terms of the oncology specialty, ICU specialty, they will be commissioned towards the end of the year. And for hospital beds, they will be opened in the first quarter of next year. So these are the figures as of December 2017. We are continuing with our recruitment exercise, and the supply of doctors has increased this year, and many more graduates are from the pediatric specialty. And we are now recruiting the relevant manpower. And by July, we hope to see more doctors and nurses joining the hospital. So our phased commissioning can be carried out as planned. And I think the response to the recruitment exercise has been good. We hope that we can have adequate manpower to provide the services as planned. Well, it's good that you have the confidence. I don't want to see that you would run out of manpower.
And the second question is on reply 265, and that is on the elderly healthcare vouchers scheme. In the community, the doctors' fees may vary based on whether the patient is using the voucher or not. So this has persisted for a long time. So can the government do something? Maybe can you mount decoy operations to catch such cases? Now, for the elderly healthcare vouchers scheme, there has been abuse, and the government is very concerned about it. We have issued guidelines to the service providers to tell them the do's and don'ts. On top of that, we must also strengthen public education so that the public should understand what the service providers are up to, and the DH will try to enhance the transparency in the use of the voucher. And in fact, on our website, we have provided information on the number of amounts, say, claimed under the voucher scheme. And in A, you said that you received 24 and 42 complaints, respectively, in 2015 and 2016. How did you handle the complaints?
When we receive complaints, we will get information about the situation. And even before we have received any complaints, we constantly monitor the utilization of these vouchers. So I want to ask if there is any penalty. And actually, what happened? Perhaps I will defer to the director. The time's up, next, Ms. Alice Mac. I would like to ask about 137. Well, healthcare and housing are both very important to Hong Kong people. And it seems that they have set aside a lot of resources on healthcare. And you mentioned about training of healthcare professionals in your opening's remark. We're all very aware of the long waiting time. But in the budget and the measures put in place by the Chief Executive to give more resources to public healthcare, or your reply to Letcor questions, they are all silent on support and training. In reply 137, in the reply, I see that when they try to align a median salary of different professionals in different clusters, we see that for NT West, the median salary is lower than other clusters. We know that they've always had a very low... Had a low salary to start with. So no matter how much the increase is, it's always behind. For NT West, we see a serious shortage of manpower. I have mentioned it in panel meetings, and I have on a number of occasions asked to meet the HA management. And there is also about the wastage. In 2017-18, for every cluster, well, out of the seven clusters, six of them, in particular, to PCA/HA, that is, the care-related support staff, there is a high wastage, more people leaving than those who join. When it comes to care-related support staff, there is a small increase every year. You increase the number of quotas, you increase the number of beds, you open more beds, more hospitals. How come you can't increase manpower in the support staff? Have you considered front-line workers? How you can retain manpower so that they will stay in hospitals? This is directly related to those who come into contact with patients. Sufficient manpower and good service quality is very important. How come that you have not resolved problems related to morale and low pay? They are often told off. That has been increased by hundreds of millions in the HA. Well, for those who want to do overtime, they are accused of only looking at money. For those who refuse, they said they are being forced to do overtime. I will first answer the question. As Ms. Mac said, that the manpower situation, the HA is concerned about manpower level. During, say, for example, busy times, say, the influenza peak, well, there is a tight manpower. We are aware of high wastage. The HA has been doing things. Sorry. High wastage is directly related to morale. They have a low pay, and they are being treated badly by management. They are being told off. Secretary, you talk about influenza peak. There has been hundreds of million dollars given to the HA. And staff continue to work, but they don't get a higher pay. Can we hear from Dr. Lam? Let's hear from Dr. Lam. What Ms. Mac see is the truth. We see a high wastage. In the past few years, we have put in place some enhancement measures. 2018-19, when it comes to ward service, you only have five seconds. PCA3 has been in... Promotional prospect has been increased to three years. Instead of five, there will be $48 million. And we also strengthened clerical support staff in the past few years. We increased their promotion prospect so they don't have to wait for a vacancy. Well, if they have years of service, three years, they will be able to get promotion. I want to ask about 68 to 75. We have a very poor public health system. So I want... I ask about funding allocation. I asked for percentage in GDP. Currently, it's 2.7%. It's one of the lowest in advanced economies. For advanced economies, it's about 10%. It's about 2.8% when patients pay. The administration has a lot of money, but they still refuse. There is about $500 million. I call it redemption coupon. We asked if vaccination can be given to every student. However, the administration did not give us any reply. Were it not for the recent tragedies, no one would look at cases of child psychiatry and also learning disability. Last year, well, you have to wait for 133 weeks for child psychiatric service. So children and their families will have to wait for over two years in difficulty. And the drug formulary is a recipe for disaster. The administration refuses to improve the situation, and they don't give enough funding. When it comes to cancer treatment, well, the whole family is put in a plight, and they are only asked to apply for Samaritan Fund, and they have to use their own savings. So I would like to ask the HA now. If you think that the administration provides sufficient funding, say, for example, increase of percentage in GDP, improvement of the drug formulary, expensive drugs, especially those for chronic illnesses and cancer cases, if they are fully reimbursed, will it reduce number of tragedies in society? That's first. Two, when it comes to psychiatric service, there's never been any benchmarks. A 6.25% in GDP is the lowest in advanced economies. If there is a clear goal, say, in five years, expenditure on psychiatric service will be increased to 0.5 or 0.75 of GDP, will it be better? In 2018-19, there will be an increase for consecutive three years. For psychiatric service, yes, the waiting time has increased, especially when it comes to child psychiatric service. We will provide more resources. However, there is still pressure on manpower. Well, we have collaboration measures. Say, for example, the Student Mental Health Support Pilot Scheme. So the situation for child psychiatric service will improve. We also have reconfigured our services. There will be more specialists for child psychiatric service. Well, if funding level can increase, it will be better. Psychiatric... For psychiatry and child psychiatry, if there is increase in resources, the situation will improve, right? And what about expensive drugs? For patients with terminal illness, cancer, or chronic illnesses, can more assistance be given? They shouldn't be asked to exhaust their lifetime savings before they get subsidy. There has been an increase in resources. Just answer me yes or no. We have to look at it in different areas. I'm very disappointed. You know full well that you need resources. So I'd like to ask the administration. When can students receive vaccination at school? We already have a plan for onsite vaccination program. At the end of the year, before the next influenza peak, the Department of Health has made arrangements for onsite vaccination service gradually. In phases or in one goal? Your time's up. Next, my myself. I would like to ask FHB H266. I would like to ask the PS for elderly vouchers. This year is $1.5 billion. But some people try to take advantage of the situation to diddle elderly citizens. Well, for three years, there has been an increase of 39 times to 300 million when it comes to optical services. The voucher scheme is to encourage elderly to switch to private sector. In 2016, there was a survey. 11% of it has been used on treatment and diagnosis. But now, we see that the money has been used to buy the French or Italian sunglasses. You said you would increase your effort in undercover operations. How much? Well, can you provide a unit rate? Say, for example, for lenses, you can provide a unit rate. Say, a few hundred dollars. You don't need $3,000 to pay a designer sunglasses. So for those items that are quite outrageous, would you put in place a unit rate? We have considered whether we should control price, but it is still market-driven. We have to enhance transparency. In the D of H website, we provided more information to show, say, well, the median amount spent for each case. Why would you not consider unit rate? Because there are many different practices in the market. But you use public money to subsidize an old person to buy a pair of glasses. And so when they walk into an optical shop, well, they are at the mercy of the staff. Why didn't you not put in a unit rate? You have put in unit rate for a lot of things, say, for example, in tender exercises. We have disseminated information on the website. Say, for example, part one for registered ophthalmology optician, what is the average spend? It's $1,600. But if you use the public money, you have to provide support because elderly people are susceptible to strong persuasion to spend more than they need. I want to ask about number 22. He's the HA Chief Executive. I see that there are 15 apps. One of them has a very low down-low rate, but they have... has a very low down low rate, but they have spent about four million dollars. I don't know if you you have used any of those apps. If you want to have an operation um related to your intestines at the Prince of Wales, you will have to download an app to make an appointment. And then you will have to download another one. And then you download um uh another app for the uh stoma. And then if you want to get medication, you'll have to download another one to get pharmaceutical service.
So my question is simple. Can you um spend to engage an uh contractor to um amalgamate all these into one app so that it convenience people and you can also put them in a better design for the interface? Thank you very much for your uh comment. Our frontline staff have been working hard on developing various apps. But then there is indeed a need for integration and if we have a better interface and in E H R R S, um then people can also uh obtain access their own health records and that can all uh all these can come into this. Now fifteen apps are so complicated. Have you heard that view before? Yes. So that's why our internal I T staff are working on it. Did you, did you not consult and consider this when you spent this four million uh dollars? Back then, various patient groups and people suffering from various diseases have asked for uh different things to be done. And technically, uh there are different patients. People, patients of um Colorado cancer may not necessarily go to P W H, they may go to other uh facilities. So um we want to make it more friendly, user friendly. Um you spent the four million dollars, we will continue to improve. Doctor Helena Wong. I would like to talk about manpower planning. Uh one, reply one six two. I raised two questions there. The first is about eighteen nineteen increase in the number of healthcare staff. The government said that uh there are more three hundred and thirty more doctors, eight hundred and thirty more nurses and two hundred and thirty more allied health staff in this year compared to the last year. Have you taken on board the expected attrition rate? Uh this, is this a net growth? Have you uh taken on board the attrition rate? In planning for our healthcare manpower, we are taking on several perspectives. Uh last year, we issued a manpower planning report. And in the next decade, uh we are looking at the manpower shortage in the next few decades. This will give us an indication on how we should increase manpower. Of course, there, we are talking about different, several aspects here. First, in terms of the number of university places, we can increase those. And on top of that, we uh need experienced um healthcare staff as well. So we are um rehiring some of the retired staff. And some retired staff would like to take on part-time work. So um we are taking on some of those as well. So maybe Doctor Leng can tell us about how ma- manpower is planned. Well, the, you've asked, uh this is the net growth, the figures that you've cited. We have taken on board the uh attrition rate. We will take on five hundred doctors and around three hundred will be the retired doctors. So that's the natural growth rate. The government hasn't answered my second question. Since there is a net increase in the number of he- uh healthcare staff, so we can expect the waiting time uh for the new cases uh for different specialties can be uh calculated. How come that you haven't given us the information? Uh waiting time for new cases, would that be shortened because of the increase in uh manpower? There is a net growth of um number of healthcare men's staff, but they are still, I mean, we we still are running short of manpower. We are going to open five hundred and seventy four new hospital beds and that um necessitates increase of manpower. And then Doctor Quap is asking a question about mental mental health. And we are also going to increase manpower. And for psychiatric services, um O N T and so on, there will be an increase in manpower. So no matter how much manpower you add in, you would not be able to cut down on the waiting time for new cases. Can you review the situation? Is it that the increased manpower will not be able to cope? If that is the case, um, then you are not, well, you are not increasing the num- uh you are not putting in sufficient number of uh university places. Have you got figures on the new uh the added places in twenty eighteen nine twenty eighteen and nineteen for nurses and doctors? Uh we can give you the figures later on, as rightly pointed out by Doctor Wong, apart from the uh previous additions of manpower. In the next triennial, we will be proposing increases. How much? By how much? Nurses, for example. For each university, uh we have a talk to them. And there can be an adjustment in the number of places. Apart from U T C funded universities, some private universities are offering nursing programs. So we will be keeping close taps on the figures. Well, first year nursing student, you will be adding in only sixty places, uh which was spread across a three universities. So in other words, every university will get twenty new um nurses places. And then they have to study for uh five years. That means five years later, we will have an additional sixty nurses only. So no matter that that won't sufficient. One four eight oh eight. And that is about a heart or cardio uh specialty. I know that you have twenty four hour uh bypass um surgery service, but are you adding resources to them? Because the doctors are quitting because they are under a lot of pressure. Uh reply one, uh zero one eight, and that is on A N E. The department. Uh the fee revision took, took effect uh on the eighteenth of uh June twenty seventeen and for the um figures for July, December twenty seventeen as compared to the next year. And we see that there are even more um uh patients in the urgent category. If we look at the second half of sixteen and seventeen, we see that there is a reduction of thirty thousand patients. Every year, we've got two point two million attendances. So thirty thousand means there will be uh two hundred and ten less every day. And for every hospital, there is a reduction of eleven point seven uh attendances for every hospital. The secretaries uh said that by an increase of eighty percent of the A N E fee, you would uh hope to redu- reduce the number of non-urgent cases, but then the uh reduction is not substantial. So does the government, uh will will the government review the situation? How long will you have to wait to conduct a review? And will you uh set up a mechanism to review the attendance fee? Or will you say um five or ten years down the road, you will again review the fee? Is there a fee adjustment mechanism? So let me say something about the principles. We're considering a fee increase. And if we have to ascertain the effectiveness, uh maybe Doctor Leng can talk about this. And fee increase can hopefully uh cut down on the attendances in non-urgent and semi-urgent cases. That's one of the objectives. And for the past ten years or so, the fee has not been uh raised. And we've been seeing inflation and also rising uh prices for medical uh materials. So uh the government is subsidizing a lot and a fee uh rise is deemed necessary. So that's point number one. And for triage one, triage two, and triage three, the number of attendances have risen, but for non-urgent and semi-urgent cases, the number has dropped progressively. So it shows that the fee increase uh does serve some effect, but should we um have a more reductions in the number? I think that depends on a number of factors. Uh number one is our primary healthcare services. Now, as for the G O P C uh services, we are providing more uh chips. You said that you are also bear in mind the C P I index and the inflation rate. So I'm asking whether in the future, whether the government um introduces a mechanism uh which can see a rise or a reduction in the fee. Well, for many years, we have an increase to the fee. So we do have to collect some information um on what the situation is like after the fee increase. And zero four seven, uh questions or uh I'm talking about the overlapping institutions in the primary uh healthcare, Health and Medical Development Advisory Committee, Primary Care Office, and Steering Committee on Primary Healthcare Development. There are three bodies. And I've asked about the expenditure in relation to the these three bodies, but the government hasn't uh given me a reply, has hasn't given me the statistics. So can you give me information on uh the expenditure involved? That's a reply zero four seven. Do you have the information here? You are asking for expenditure. Well, in terms of, say, the manpower expenses and number of meetings held, et cetera. We are setting a new uh committee. And that is a steering committee which will um compel our strategies and long-term uh blueprint. And the Department of Health and some other units are now working on primary healthcare and they should have such information. Mr. Prince Yopin. My question is, reply one four eight. I am concerned about the allied health uh cares uh support in the various clusters of H A. The administration has given us some statistics for allied health. Now, um there has been an additional manpower for every cluster and Hong Kong West sixteen seventeen. Well, it's thirty nine posts, there are fewer, um that's thirty nine posts fewer this year. And also for the uh wastage rate in uh B in the table fifteen sixteen. Uh different cluster is taking on new uh staff. The total is two a thousand four hundred and eighty six and you are losing some four thousand people. And for uh Hong Kong West cluster, uh you are bringing in two hundred fifty more and then two hundred and forty is has left. So what what are the reasons? Have you talked to the uh clusters how you can retain the staff? And then also the remuneration in item C, you have listed the average monthly salary expenditure per care-related support staff. For example, N T West cluster is seventeen thousand dollars. It includes basic salary allowance, gratuity, and other uh benefits such as a subsidy benefit and death and disability benefit, et cetera. Do you have a breakdown? For example, the um average seventeen uh thousand dollars, what is the breakdown in uh in basic salary, allowance, gratuity, et cetera? Some um support staff have told me that they have a special allowance uh for being on shift and dealing with obnoxious materials, et cetera. But for uh new staff, they don't enjoy such an allowance. Can you standardize their practice? And last question, if you don't have time, uh can you give me a reply? And in one four nine, uh reply one four nine, you mentioned that have a a total of seventy six thousand seven, six hundred and sixty three uh staff. So what about the contract staff? Uh they number four thousand, they are not within this uh payroll. Uh what is the total expenditure on these um outsourced contract staff? Would you incorporate them um in the future in your establishment? So can I defer to the H A?
Well, um, well, there are many different factors that we have to take into account when it comes to recruitment. Well, sometimes the median salary perhaps um because of the length of service or um an inc- and a large number of new recruits, it may have affected the um the change. Yeah, uh uh in reply to Miss Max's question, yes, in recent years, we have seen highway stage. We have improved the salary as well as the promotion prospect. Say for example, for P C A, um it, well, uh we have improved the promotional prospect by reducing the number of years of experience. We will keep in view um possible improvement measures to uh improve their their pay or their work environment as as well as um wastage. Yes, so we have about seventy thousand staff and four thousand of of all of them are outsourced workers and not included. Can you give us a breakdown? Say for example, the amount of basic salary, allowance, uh and graduity. Yes, we have the information for different ranks. But there were some allowance that were old ones available um were during the the days when they were, they were still civil servants. But for new recruits employed under the H A, these allowances are not available anymore. We will improve the work environment and other measures instead of um giving them allowances. Mister Zheng, I would like to ask about number seventy two in relation to child psychiatry. Last month, there was a granny that killed a six-year-old grandchild. Uh the child was suspected to suffer from A D H D. Several years ago, a father killed the son. The son suffered from A D H uh A D H D as well as autism. When it comes to taking care of um children suffering from uh this disease, it's very, it's extra difficult. I see from the reply that for thirty thousand cases, over two-thirds of these cases are are children with these problems. Early identification and treatment is very important. However, in your reply, I see that most of the cases are very uh are very similar, but they will have to wait for two years. That is the the average. I do believe that for these cases, the um manifestation, manifestations are very similar. We can't just endlessly drag out the the wait, the waiting time as well as um the provision of treatment. I know that the H A is doing something, but the situation remains unchanged. In the past three years, waiting time remains unchanged. So what's your plan? I don't want to see any more tragedies. What plans do you have to improve the waiting time? So that uh children will receive um diagnosis and treatment as early as possible. We attach a lot of importance on diagnosis and treatment of child psychiatric cases. We have set up a consultative committee. The chairman, Mister Wong Yan Long. The chairman, Mister Wong Yan Long, talked to us about a previous review report entailing four forty recommendations or so. Child psychiatry has been given a very high priority. I hope Doctor Zheng will understand. The Department of Health and the and the uh hospital authority have been doing their respective work. However, there are still some bottlenecks. We try to um unclock the bottleneck in terms of manpower and resources. We also aim to enhance the capabilities of our staff. We hope to reduce to reduce waiting time. Can you be more specific? When do you plan to reduce waiting time by how much? Perhaps I'll defer to the H A. I'll defer to Doctor Cole. As the secretary said, that um we see huge demand for child psychiatry. In recent years, there has been a huge increase in number of children seeking psychiatric help. A lot of them are autistic or um children suffer suffering from A D H D. We have a very tight manpower. We try to deploy more staff to deal with um children psychiatric cases. For specialized outpatient clinics, that is the triage system. Some cases have been triaged into routine cases. We have um the uh student health pilot, student mental health support pilot scheme. When will the waiting time be cut to well, or by how much? I know you have been making an effort, but the situation remains unchanged. We can see from the figures and it's something that we have been talking about for a number of years. We won't be able to give you an answer today because um there has been an increasing number of cases. When we, when we are at the same time increasing service capacity, it may not be a realistic target if you ask for one. We hope that whilst we increase service quantity, we will increase resources. Professor Joseph Lee is one oh nine, also about psychiatric services. People talk about waiting time in clusters. I see that in the past three years, when it comes to children or adult psychiatric services, there has been an increasing demand for outpatient and admission services. But there has been only a few more nurses. And in twenty eighteen nineteen, there has been a drop by fifty percent of nursing places from a hundred ninety to a hundred and twenty. For N T East, you will have to wait for fifty weeks. Following up on what Doctor Zheng said, that well, you you can't increase uh um manpower and you have cut training places. What are you going to do? As we've said, that we endeavor to improve and child psychiatric service. When it comes to psychiatric nurses, previously our um review report state stated that shortage is not as serious as other areas. When the report was compiled, the review report of psychiatric health has not been published. There are about forty recommendations, and we try to implement them. We do believe that we need land and we need manpower. We'll continue to review the situation uh on um healthcare staff, psychiatric services or not. Experienced nurses are very important to the work of the H A because workload has increased, so has complexity. The H A has been doing a lot of work, say, for example, increase the number of nursing clinics. In twenty eighteen nineteen, this is our work for outreach team, the ratio for serious psychiatric cases. There will be an increase in manpower. It will be improved from one to fifty to one to forty. We will increase manpower. For the pilot scheme, um when we support, increase support to community dementia, uh we will be increased to twenty million dollars, extended to forty um uh elderly uh elderly daycare center. But nursing clinics, that will be extended to forty schools. There will be increase in specialist outpatient clinic in Kowloon Hospital. There will be forty more beds as using about forty-four million dollars. Psychiatric nurse, we believe that there will be an increase in supply. Thank you. I still have a number of questions. If you can't give me figures, please supply it after the meeting. One one oh about community nurse. You said that there will be about five thousand um more outreach visits. So specifically, how many community nurses have you increased? And another one is one one four palliative care and um rehabilitative care. He said that eight hundred and thirty nurses have been added. So how many of them actually are put to palliative care, that is end-of-life care? The third one is two two five is in relation to the Department of Health. It talks about elderly center in elderly health centers. For uh Tun Mun, you will have to wait for fifteen months. Uh, can you increase manpower to improve the situation? Thirty seconds for three questions. Professor Li mentions about palliative care, community nurses, as well as elderly healthcare. They are all part of our work. I will ask the Department of Health to supplement. I will provide the information about manpower. We have increased our services. What about D V H? For elderly health centers, in the past two years, we have increased two teams. Deployed to centers with vacancies to alleviate um wait, long waiting time. Because of restrictions of number of rooms, we may not be able to deploy sufficient manpower, but we have disseminated information to information. If they don't mind, they can go to our centers with a shorter waiting time. Doctor Zheng Chong Tai, I would like to ask about uh number five. It's about waiting time for specialist service. There may be some like routine check or stable cases, but the median waiting time, you can see that even if it's a mild illness, it will um grow into a serious one. For Island East, uh for um O N G and orthopedics, you will have to wait for at least a year. And this more serious for Island and Kowloon. For Island West, for um ophthalmology and O N G is still quite serious. Uh, you may say that we'll have to also look at N T East and N T West. I can see that um the waiting median time is related to demography. Say, for example, Island East West for orthopedics, waiting time is longer. It's something to do with um a more elderly people or more elderly female living in Island East or places with um a high density of public housing. For N T West is ophthalmology and others. It's not as serious. So in the long run, it's about training of specialist disciplines. In twenty sixteen, uh in in relation to the situation, they gave us a reply. They said that because of the steering committee um review report, they will put in place an internal resources deployment model to analyze the use of resources, patients going to a different cluster, and also use of service and resources.
So this will cover, uh this would be a model covering the waiting time and so on. That was um uh said in twenty sixteen and it will be taken forward. Um, but then in twenty eighteen, there's been no obvious improvement. And in the reply, um nothing in that regard is mentioned. So for this population enhancement model, does it still exist or not? Thank you, uh Doctor Zheng for your question. For this model, put in simple terms, we are working on it, proceeding with it, but the H A can give you more details. Apart from this model being adopted by the H A, as rightly pointed out by Doctor Zheng, um the different demographics will affect the patronage levels. So in the last year's policy address, we said that the government will um set up a triennial funding model for the H A so that it can make better plans for the future. Can I defer to Doctor Lung to talk about the um model? The population uh enhanced based model for allocation funding for uh Kowloon East, N T Eastern or N T West um in phase of the facilities there and also the particular uh uh population growth there, and so we are seeing lesser page patronage. But we will be looking at the manpower allocation um or the manpower situation before we um try to allocate the right resources under the model. We would also be uh have to wait for expansionary development projects of the hospitals before we can implement further the model. So you are really looking, uh you're looking at the demographics, the ratio between the different genders, or you can make um projections on the need for some special um the services in the district. Will those projections be made? The paper was drafted in twenty sixteen. It was a reply to Doctor Lan Calau's oral question. You've got ten seconds left. In the review of the H A report last time, that was also mentioned at the panel of of uh health services. Uh, based on the model, projections could be made. Thank you, Mister Vincent Zheng.
I'm happy to see that there has been an increase in expenditure on healthcare in the budget. I have several questions. First is about the healthcare voucher. The government will be adding a one-off, a one thousand dollars to the healthcare voucher, but I don't think it's enough. Uh, I hope that there should be further increases in the value and also the eligibility age should be lowered from sixty-five to sixty. So if you can't do it this year, can you undertake that you would work on it next year? So that would be more coverage of the healthcare service, uh healthcare voucher. Second, on hospitals, I know that there will be uh more resources to be plowed into hospitals. There will be a new hospital in Kings Park. I'm worried because um the area that is quite congested already. Is it going to be a mini hospital? I hope that you can provide sufficient services for Kowloon West uh cluster. The waiting time for admission is very long. And in Changsha Wan, there will be a popu- new population of tens of thousands of people. And C M C Curtis Medical Center uh is not providing sufficient service. So I hope that there will be expansion of that hospital. Thank you, Doctor, uh Mister Zheng for your question. When it comes to the healthcare, uh early healthcare voucher, if Doctor Mister Zheng can recall this, we've been increasing the amount year after year, and actually, the increase this time is quite substantial. Apart from increasing the uh value, we are also a progressive lowering the age. Uh, at the outset, it was a seventy, last year it was lower to sixty-five. So we would review um the work in this aspect appropriately. So in terms of hospitals, can the H A elaborate on the Kings Park site? The government will be devoting three hundred billion dollars, um the majority of which will be for the H A for hospital planning. We are planning for Q H S R site. When the Kai Tech Hospital is commissioned, some of the services or these, all the services of the K U H will be transferred there. So we are planning for a new hospital in the Q U H site to make up for the shortfall of services within that cluster. This is a very prime location. Uh, and that is, is it's difficult to find a prime site. So we want to make the best use of the land, and planning takes time. As for Kowloon West Services, after the redevelopment of P M H, there will be more services to be provided. And for the like liking um block in phase one, there will be additional four hundred beds, and that can provide some alleviation. And for C M C, uh there will be uh room for expansion. Maybe in the second phase, we can look at that. We'll have have to be mindful about the overall operation of the H A, and when we have a concrete plans, we will report the same. Thank you. Follow up, um I hope that it will not be done on a one-off basis when it comes to the increasing the value of the vouchers. And and I hope that it will be even more desirable if elders aged sixty can be covered. Uh, the Kings Park, what is the timetable? We're only part of the hospital be redeveloped or the entire hospital. That will be covered under the second phase hospital plan, under the three hundred billion dollars um plan. While the new S O P C block will not be demolished, but for the old buildings, they will be demolished. And they uh will be day uh services to be provided, diagnostic services to be provided. Uh, we have to make further planning before we report the situation to the panel. And we are also concerned about the Kwan Wa Hospital. Yes, once the allocation uh of funding is available, we'll speed up the works.
Uh, reply one eight six, many members have referred to mental health uh today. And in twenty seventeen December, the Mental Health Advisory Committee was uh set up. And Mister Wenya Wong Yan Long, the Ex- Secretary Justice, was the chair. And it is responsible for mapping out mental health policies and provide advice to the government. Now, in terms of the hospital beds, in Kow- uh Kowloon Central Cluster, there will be forty additional psychiatric beds. Why just Kowloon Central Cluster? And in reply, six um sixty-three, in fifteen sixteen, the patronage is seventy-nine percent, sixteen to seventy, seventy-two percent. Seventeen to eighteen, it has dropped to seventy percent. I am concerned about uh N T East is from uh six seventy-six to seventy-eight to seventy-nine percent. So how, I mean, how does you, your mechanism of adding hospital beds work? In reviewing the um service capacity, the and the service needs, H A will look at whether um additional services should be provided through outpatient services, provision of hospital beds, uh day services or outreach services. They will look at all these factors. Can I defer to the H A? Doctor Lang.
Every year, for psychiatric services, uh we will increase such services year after year. And facilities is a major consideration, argue whether we do have the venues or space. For uh N T uh East, the surface needs is increasing while the facilities are lacking. We need uh to find uh locations to increase beds for how uh N T East. And in twenty seventeen eighteen, uh for N T East, we have added a new services. We have to be looking at the broad picture, and overall, the waiting time for psychiatric services services uh, uh, in uh, Anti East is long. And then Cow- Cowon Central, it is also taking care of uh, mental health patients of Cowon East. So that's why we are adding a new facilities there. It's not just about Anti East. The statistics show that only Cow- uh, Cowon East, I mean, Cowon Central Cluster will get new facilities. We know that there isn't enough space within hospitals and it's quite impossible to add in more hospital beds. I hope that you can look at the service needs in considering whether to add in new hospital beds. The government is also actively um, looking for sites to do that, I understand. And. A follow-up visits, uh, reply zero six six, Mrs. Reed Ginny Yip asked that question. The, for the three, past three years, what are the number of underage people seeking psychiatric services and what are the numbers in relation to follow-up visits? Well, the follow-up visits, the number is important because if uh, the patients are not going to the follow-up consultation, then it doesn't mean that the NGOs are following up on them or what? How come that you don't have the figures? Uh, we are not talking about follow-up visits, we talk about old cases, we do have the figures on those. As um, why is the waiting time getting longer? Because we have a backlog of old cases. Um, so I would be giving you the statistics on the number of attendances of um, old cases. Mr. Chen Han Peng.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question. On zero zero four, uh, Chinese medicine services. We know that last year, in the whole year. The number of attendances for general consultation for CM services in NGOs is a one point two million attendances were recorded. So you can see that CM uh, services could alleviate um, the pressure on frontline services and palliative care services. And item C, I asked. The. Uh, attrition rate of staff and the manpower situation. The government hasn't given me a reply. It is giving me an, a, uh, some, uh, a total figure only, a total of four hundred and one Chinese medicine practitioners were employed and they are dealing with one point two million attendances. So for the eighteen. Uh, Chinese Western Medicine uh, clinics, uh, no extra resources have been given to them, but then they are still uh, operating effectively. Um, would you consider allocating more resources to them so that they can do better? And for also the um, the interns of the hospitals, can you um, add, increase their salary? And for zero zero five, um, the waiting time for SOPCs is very long. And the first priority goes to those who are very serious, they have to wait for only less than one week, but then for other cases, they have to wait for over six weeks. And for psychiatric patients, uh, some of them have to wait for uh, five to six weeks. If um, they are, the patients are in problem, they still have to wait for one month before they can see the doctors. And for some ordinary cases, uh, the waiting time can be as long as eighty to one hundred and seven weeks. So the patients' conditions might worsen during this, this one hundred and seven week period. So how is the government to deal with it so that the patient's situation will not worsen during the waiting time? It will become a vicious cycle in the end. So can the government do something to try to help patients um, who are not in serious conditions? Now, for these eighteen Chinese medicine teaching um, centers, Mr. Chan's observation is right, a lot of uh, people would like to uh, patronize CM services and we are attach a lot of importance to CM services. In developing primary healthcare uh, in the future, we will be looking at. The types of CM services which can help in preventing disease, diseases. Now, for these eighteen centers, the uh, the HA has been committing more resources to them. The HA can. Um, give you more information. They can um, work or they can uh, be on internship in the Chinese medicine centers for training and research. The remuneration has been increasing, we have set aside additional resources for these centers. Let's see if the HA would like to supplement. I'll defer to Dr. Fang. In relation to these centers. If the public support our work, now we have increased manpower, say in twenty fifteen, where there were three hundred and sixty-six, it has been increased to four hundred and one. We continue to review their remuneration and there is also additional funding to support training. I know that the administration give them money. But there are conditions and for a specific purpose. I'm talking about uh, um, the basic allocation not being increased. And I also, also asked about waiting time. Shall we hear from the uh, HA of what they have done to reduce waiting time? For certain disciplines, waiting time is still long. For orthopedics, uh, we will um, work with Association of Family Doctors and there's also a collaboration with um, the Child Psychiatric Services. We understand that there is a shortage of manpower and an increase in service demand, we will do our best to try to reduce waiting time. Mr. Roy Wong. Thank you. First. Is, I would like to ask about waiting time uh, in the ONG as, as well as um, orthopedics for Cowon East and West. Waiting time is fifty-seven weeks, is it right? We all know that you have to wait for a very long time for specialist service. Have you conducted any resources, uh, have you conducted any analysis? And will you provide resources to reduce waiting time? And I see that for A and E department, there is over capacity. The longest is Cowon East. Uh, they have a hundred and forty-four um, um, nurses and sixteen doctors for Cowon West, there are about a hundred and twenty-two doctors and two hundred and forty-four nurses. With so few doctors, then frontline officers will face more pressure. What is the reply number? It's uh, from press report. So can you give us the figures for specialist um, services, long waiting time? And I have, have I made any mistakes in the figures I've quoted? I'll say something before I ask the HA to provide information. We understand that there is a lot of room to reduce waiting time. But we need several things, manpower and land. If we want to speed up the consultation uh, efficiency, then we need more rooms. We are putting a lot of resources in this regard. A second area is capability. We need to train staff to deal with a specialist service. Let's hear from the HA. Waiting time, your figures are right. Specialist outpatient clinics, without redevelopment, it's, it's impossible or difficult to increase the number of beds, say for Union Hospital, waiting time is long. Uh, United Christian Hospital. Well, we, we need redevelopment. As you have heard, that waiting time is very long. So we do need the redevelopment to increase the number of consultation rooms or wards. We hope that we will be able to improve the situation. When I say over capacity, it's not just manpower, it's space according to the administration. It's rather worrying for Cowon East Cluster. If we look at the longest waiting time is Cowon East for A and E sixty-six doctors. The shortest is Cowon West, a hundred and twenty-two doctors. I don't uh, ask for that, the figures to be balanced out. Will you um, be able to increase resources within a short time? And to tackle long waiting time? Yes, we see that every year we will increase manpower. Say for United Christian Hospital, if there is the space constraint, perhaps Chongkong Hospital can help. Space is one problem and if there is a shortage of manpower, we will put in more resources to cut waiting time. I don't have any follow-up questions. Next is Man, Ms. Ann Chang. I would like to ask about cancer patients. What is the number of locally registered um, uh, cancer treatment drugs and how many of them are in the drug formulary? Shall we hear from the department? You just asked for figures? Yes. Who is to take the question? Doctor Cole. We try to include as many drugs in the formulary as possible, but for some drugs, there may be different uses. Let me give you some figures. Twenty sixteen seventeen for cancer treatment, a fee, a cost. Five hundred and ninety million dollars. So you see, a lot of resources has been put in for cancer treatment drugs. There is a large number of cancer patients in Hong Kong. Every year, there are tens of thousands of new cases. Every year. About fourteen thousand people die of cancer. They ha- the, these patients have been complaining through different channels. They said that a lot of target drugs or some new drugs or some locally registered drugs that are proved to be effective to treat. Cancer are not included in the drug formulary. As a result. Patients can't get the drugs they need to save their lives. It's uh. Heart-wrenching. Because a, it is um. It is great that if you can do something to save lives. Would you? Consider setting aside a fund? To help patients who are in desperate need of target drugs? Or patients who don't have the means to purchase locally registered drugs to treat cancer? Thank you, Ms. Chang. When it comes to treatment of cancer and its prevention, we are very concerned and we have a policy. When it comes to prevention, control, monitor. Monitoring, treatment, different departments are doing a lot of work. Drugs are important, but it's only one of the um, factors. For the HA, they would like to find the best model. For different departments to cooperate, to provide the best service. There has been an increase in uh, resources on cancer drugs and they have been putting efforts to improve the drug formulary. Those who are in financial need, we have the Samaritan Fund as well as the Community Care Fund. There will be new information improved on efficacy of drugs. It depends on the clinical situation and whether there is sufficient scientific uh, evidence that the drugs is effective. We have an expert panel. To monitor the situation. And there are more meetings to effectively uh, review the scientific evidence. Next, Mr. Kenneth Lau. Answer. Two twenty, I asked a question, it's in relation to the elderly care va- healthcare voucher. I urge the administration to continuously monitor the situation to ensure that is properly used. Out of a hundred and three cases, thirty cases have been found to be substantiated. There are nine and seven cases that have been referred to the police and statutory bodies for following up. Fourteen case, there are still fourteen cases outstanding, how are they going? How are they dealt with? What will be the penalty? And since the implementation of the scheme, how many service providers have been disqualified from participation because of uh, misconduct? And for those cases that have been substantiated, have the service providers been disqualified? Is it the case that after one year, uh, they can uh, apply to participate in the scheme after disqualification? I thank Mr. Lau for his views. I'll ask the Department of Health to provide the information. We have um, been aware of press reports. And the Department of Health. Has been doing their work. The Department of Health has provided guidelines to service providers to, so that they will know uh, what are the dos and don'ts. Members of the public are als- also have a part to play in, but they have to be smart, otherwise they will fall into these traps. We have also enhanced transparency. We provide information on how to use these vouchers on the website. So that people will know more. I will defer to the Department of Health. Between two thousand nine and twenty seventeen, end of October, there are two hundred and fifty-eight uh. Inappropriate applications, most of them relate to um, documentary errors, as at December last year, for breach of terms of conditions. There are nineteen service quali- uh, service providers that have been disqualified, they include opticians, uh, nurses, chemists, uh, as well. They include opticians, nurses, chemists, as well doctors. There are also some suspected fraud cases, thirty-nine of them. These cases have been referred to the police. Some of them have seen prosecution. And there are also cases that result in imprisonment. And some of them involve the family members of the elderly. And for disqualified service providers, we don't have a mechanism for them to rejoin the scheme. Okay, Mr. Tommy Zheng. Thank you, Chairman.
I have a question in relation to question fifty-four on doctors. Now, I would like to say something in response to a member's question on drugs. We talk about drugs for rare diseases and therapy drugs. You talk about is an issue which has to do with money. I've talked to the chairman of the Hospital Authority. And if medicines have been approved by the central level, but then if the individual hospitals have to prescribe or use those drugs, there is another procedure. So we don't understand why when the HA central level has decided that a certain therapy drug can be used, then the individual hospital has to go through another procedure to get that drug used. So we would be meeting shortly with the HA to see whether we can shorten the time for inclusion of drugs in the drug formulary. This is a question related to doctors. In twenty seventeen, the population to doctor ratio is one point nine compared to UK, US, Korea, Japan, etc. We are on the low side. And Japan, the second lowest, two point three. Japan has a ratio of two point three in population to doctor ratio. For every one thousand people, we just have a ratio of one point nine. Now, we are going to increase the number of training places for doctors in universities. If we increase, do the increase now, it will only be ten years later that these students can serve Hong Kong. We have so many pressing needs. I know that the secretary said that eh we have passed the MRO bill and the limited registration period can be extended from one to three years. Well, I can bet with you. If you can get an extra fifty doctors, then you'll already be doing a good job. But we understand fifty doctors do not suffice. And maybe you disagree, I hope that you are right, that more doctors can be broadened under that relaxation. The Liberal Party and myself have said that the Singapore motto can help address the pressing needs. Before, the number of doctors has become sufficient. We are running short of services. And a lot of people do not get appropriate service treatment. We have the money to expand the hospital, add more hospital beds, but the present problems persist and cannot be resolved. So can the government consider importing doctors? And on a long-term basis, we have discussed whether extra places can be added to the two universities. But can we have another or a third medical school to be set up in Hong Kong? This is another way of addressing the problem. Can that be done? Thank you, Dr. Zheng, for your comments on the doctors' numbers. Mr. Zheng said that the increase in the number of training places is for the long term. But we think this is a, a, an important measure. If we don't add in the number of places now, we won't have sufficient doctors six years later. So we added in new places six to seven years ago. So this year, July, we'll have an additional one hundred doctors graduating. And um and next year and onwards, we'll have an additional one hundred doctors every year. Now, after the Medical Registration Amendment Bill has been passed, our colleagues have liaised with the Medical Council of Hong Kong. And the chairman of the council was leading a working group to follow up on the work subsequent to the passing of the bill. And that includes limited registration. And how um student doctors overseas have, could learn about the change. And the HA can hopefully hire more doctors on limited registration. We are reviewing the situation now. In the budget, we have reserved some resources amount the three hundred billion dollars to add in extra facilities for the medical schools. If the medical schools can see their facilities and manpower and enhance, then the increase in the number of training places can be done more effectively. Dr. Elizabeth Quat, I would like to follow up on Dr. Zheng's question on cancer drugs, drugs for cancer patients. We have said many times that the mechanism for introducing new drugs in the Hospital Authority is a protracted process. From the registration of the drugs to is, the inclusion in the uh formulary and so on, and, and the use of it, then it takes a six to eight years' time. And if drugs have been registered and they have to be included in the HA, that has to be approved by the electrical. And then there is also the vetting of the HA and then the introduction to the clusters. It's a very long process. Well, maybe at least two countries have approved the drugs and under the existing mechanism, they are introduced in Hong Kong and successfully registered here. So do, does the council need to approve such drugs? Each and every one of these drugs? I think it's a, we should review on this. The government should review how you can streamline the introduction of drugs procedures. The HA will regularly hold meetings and many drugs are on the waiting list to be approved by you. And for drugs for rare diseases, the patients are waiting eagerly for these drugs to improve their health conditions. It's, they should not be asked to wait. Can we have, say, two queues or two waiting lists for the drugs? One for cancer patients, the other for other patients? So that drugs can be introduced locally more easily. I think you should have an overall review of the mechanism. At various occasions in the past, you said that you will consider. How is the progress now? Thank you, Dr. Quat, for your concern about the introduction of drugs and mechanism. We've received many views in that regard. And the HA every year will look at what improvement can be made to the mechanism. While drugs form part of the treatment process, is an important part. The government, I mean, the HA has been working on cancer drugs and tried to expedite the process. And for drugs for other diseases, they've been also working on the mechanism as well. Let me clarify. Well, let me clarify that electrical approval is not needed for introduction of drugs, especially cancer drugs. We have to look at, say, at the efficacy of certain drugs. And I believe that there is room for improvement in terms of the timing. Now, as to drugs which can be included in the Samaritan Fund or CCF, now, we will increase the frequency of the relevant exercise from once to twice every year. Dr. Cole, any supplement? For introducing new drugs to drug formulary, we are holding meetings once every three months. We look at the needs of the patients. If individual patients have special needs, we will try to do things to help them. A meeting once every three months is too long to many patients. But it's not that you will cover all the drugs on the waiting list in your meeting. So please look into how you can expedite things. And going by the Audit Commission's report and also views of the public, um, we can see that HA is adopting a number of computer systems and has recently launched a number of apps. But I think they are not, these apps are not integrated and they are not interconnected. I know that you are carrying a review. What is the timetable and the direction of your review? Actually, the chairman has asked a similar question previously. Uh, we know that we have to integrate the mobile apps. The IT staff and the headquarters will try to come up with more user-friendly apps to facilitate patients browsing information. Mr. Yip Kin Yun, thank you, Chairman. On medical reform, the secretary's speaking notes has talked about men, healthcare manpower is an important issue. And I hope that I will not be repeating what others have asked. But members are rightly concerned about the manpower situation. In paragraph four of your speaking notes, you mentioned about doctors, dentists, nurses and relevant allied health professionals and the number of training places. Apart from doctors, there are other healthcare professionals. And what are you going to do to enhance their training? If training is provided under the UGC system, we have the limit of the fifteen thousand places. But if it's self-financed institutions, then the academic and professional accreditation is another kind of constraint. How can we overcome these constraints? So that we can provide a sufficient number of healthcare, allied healthcare professionals with the right quality and caliber? So that the medical needs in Hong Kong can be met? I'm very concerned about this. So, does the secretary have any measures to overcome these two constraints? Thank you, Mr. Yip, for your question. In relation to healthcare manpower, as we all know, if we are to increase the supply, we must provide more training. This is one of the tactics to achieve sufficient manpower. We have self-financed institutions and UGC-funded universities providing training. For some say, healthcare professionals like doctors, they are trained only by UGC-funded institutions. And we try to increase the facilities there, increase the number of places so that they can meet with our demands. For some other institutions under UGC and other self-financed institutions which would like to provide training, actually, they are doing that. And I think we should gatekeep the quality. We makes, must make sure that certain professional standards are being achieved. And the assessment of such qualifications is being undertaken by some experts and the professions themselves. The different institutions have to go through assessment accreditation. And well, this is a major principle that we have in mind.
We understand, on one hand, that universities under UGC run different courses. And if there needs to be an increase in number of places, there has to be done gradually. For self-financing institutions, if they can provide more places of quality, we don't restrict the number. But I think the most important principle is that they should be of high quality and should be accredited, accredited. Yes, we have to ensure quality. There are two gatekeepers. First is academic assessment and also professional assessment. For a lot of times, for professional assessments, you will have to first run the course before it can be assessed. So it's a chicken and egg problem. Can some assistance be given by the bureau? If courses can't be accredited, then there won't be any students because there is no course. I understand that is a matter of chicken and egg. Relevant committees can provide guidelines to course operators. Say, for example, for the Nursing Council, they can provide information before the course is organized. This will provide the expert panel with confidence that with such guidelines in place, the courses in the future will be of, will be, will be able to meet quality. There is still some time. I will follow up on the question. I have spoken to Dr. Cole, the previous secretary in twenty twelve when I became, when I was elected to legislature in NT West. I have already mentioned about uneven distribution of resources. At that time, you were the, you were the undersecretary. You have been following up on this matter. You, that was a promise that in the future, well, allocation of resources should be packed with population. But that doesn't apply to specialists. That I understand. I would like to ask, maybe I, I will hear from the chief executive. There is resources, but you may not be able to make doctors stay. Well, you may put resources there. You now talk about deployment. What if, sir, what if someone doesn't want to travel far to go to work? I, I suggested some hardship allowance, but you sounded reluctant. But when there is even allocation of resources, is it the case that doctors will just go where you ask them to? Hospital Authority. Dr. Cole is, Dr. Cole is now the director of NT West. Well, there is sufficient, there is very good transportation support. There are no problems with recruitment in NT West. Say, for example, Tung Mun and Yun Long. But there are elementary staff that were, that lives in new territories and work in Hong Kong Island. I think the most important thing is manpower as well as facilities.
You see that for N T West East and Kowloon East, the increase in percentage terms of resources is higher. In Tin Chei Wai, there are currently about twelve thousand places. In twenty eighteen, we will open the round-the-clock surface and there will be hospital beds for admissions. I have asked doctors. They said that there are no problems. Doctors and nurses in N T West will not be deterred by transportation. So in the end, there won't be inadequate manpower supply, is that right? This is the first time I heard. For N T West, there is no particular difficulty with recruitment. There is an operating complex being built. There will be more people working there. I have a quick question for the P S. The elderly healthcare voucher. A lot of elderly people don't use the internet. You may appeal to them, but will they actually do it? They may be susceptible to persuasion to buy something more expensive. I heard from you that, well, there is autonomy and you leave it to the market when it comes to the unit rate. Is that right? Say, for example, when you visit an optometrist and the optometrist said that there is a need for a pair of specs and sometimes you need more expensive ones. Say, for example, unit rate for a frame. Do you think that anyone would need three thousand dollar frame instead of a one thousand dollar one? Are there's a matter of choice? But you're using public money to support people. You meant to help them. But they want to get something more luxurious and you still give them the money. Don't you think it's weird? The lens may be something different, but there should be a unit rate for a frame. Well, it will make it more palatable. There are certain items that has nothing to do with person's condition. If you do something like this, it will be more popular. First, I thank Secretary. Your teams are very proactive. They've answered all questions. There are people waiting for a second round, but they're not here. And we've overrun by two minutes. No, thank you anyway. Thank you.